Mike, did you have a quick today?
Yeah.
I was getting my hair cut and I see.
I'm looking through the window this morning. I'm like, that was.
I think it was.
You're driving.
I'm.
He's driving.
Way.
I saw you.
Are you certified?
That's absolutely.
Yeah, we had on our speed. I mean, their noses are on the actually. He's hunting. His nose, no, but her nose.
I just scratched double.
So.
All right, it is 5:30 and I got the thumbs up from Dwayne that we are ready to go. And I know lots to discuss in the budget tonight, so we will go ahead and get started. Al, roll call.
Benson.
Here.
Brunick.
Here.
Hanoff.
Here.
Minor.
Here.
Schramm.
Here.
Villanueva.
Present.
Weber.
Here.
Mayor Moser.
Here.
City Manager Leon.
Now's the time and place. We are, this is a city work session where we're going to discuss the budget. But is there anybody here in the audience tonight that wants to speak to the commission on something not related to the budget? All right, seeing no movement then, we will move on in our agenda for the work session tonight, and I will turn it over to City Manager Leon to present the 2024 proposed budget.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the commission and for folks listening and those in the public. Welcome to the, I guess, tropical version of the budget. Apologize, the Yankton School District is working on the HVAC system, so we can't regulate it. So you have to self-regulate and when it's too cold, we can layer up. That's what I thought we were going to come into, so I don't know. If you need to make a fan out of your budget papers, please do so. But there is a nice breeze outside, so if you do need to step out for a bit, totally understand that. For the public's benefit, there are copies of the budget online. It's under the Finance Office as Proposed 2024 Budget. And I tell, make sure I tell everyone that because tonight is the presentation where we put, bring to you what the staff has put together and what I'm recommending to you for 2024. The entire budget process, as many of you know, is a couple of months long. We'll set a public hearing in the near future and you'll take feedback from the public. I'll take feedback from the public. We'll get a lot of questions. And the public hearing will actually be, I think, scheduled probably September 11th. So there is some time yet for folks to provide you with information and for you to have that discussion amongst yourselves as well as with the community as to where the resources should be allocated. There's some copies of the budget letter available here that Jean made, so if people want to take one of those or if people with technology want to pull up that budget letter, that's really the, a good, serves as a good overview for everyone on what we're going to talk about this evening. And then we can delve into any of the details or line items that the commission would like to or would like to ask about. So that is a good template, I guess, and what I'll use to go through the budget and move down that road. We're going to take a couple off-ramps on the highway here to talk about a few things that are altered in 2023's, this year's budget. So I want to recognize what those things are and have a little feedback and discussion with you about what those things are, understanding that some of those items have had to change as well. Okay. The state requires us to provide the budget, present the budget to the commission by August 1st. That's not ideal for us as a staff, and here are the reasons why. We don't have our wages negotiated with our labor unions at that time. We don't have our health insurance premium quotes back from our providers that we've solicited. We also only have, when we start putting together the budget, April, May, we only have a few months of sales tax to, you know, take a look at and project. So it's awfully hard to know now where we're going to end the year, but that's the state law, so that's what we do. I say that because this has to be taken, like all budgets, as sort of a breathing and living document, knowing that it's going to change. That job's gotten even harder for us, I think, in the years post-pandemic. I'm not exactly sure where we're going to end up inflation-wise. Some people think inflation's going down. Some people think it's here to stay. Some people think it depends upon what you buy, but it's still around us. We also, as I've expressed to the commission, but the public may not know, have a hard time procuring things. Equipment, some of our equipment for the wastewater project, for example, they've said, you know, could be 400 days plus to procure. So we're not able to get things in the regular budget season. It's pushing them to the next year. Costs are changing, so it's more difficult than it used to be, I think, to make a prediction. We've always budgeted our expenses high and our revenues conservatively, and that's worked pretty well. As you know, this year, we've had some projects that have come in overbid. So we'll have to think about that, especially when it comes to road projects, when the cost of concrete's continuing to increase, et cetera. So that makes it a little more difficult, and the number of bids that we're seeing on projects has also, that list has also gotten shorter. So we're not unique there. Every city and community is seeing that, but it all impacts the budget. So I think this year, meaning 2024 and going forward, you may have to make some choices on projects. If we see things that come in way overbid and it's a project you want and need to have done, we may have to make some priorities and push some things. So again, the things that we talked about in capital are plans, budget plans, and they're in the budget. They may or may not come to fruition based on priority and based on how those things bid out when we get to them in the spring. The entire budget is $81 million, just over $81 million, so $81,135,000 and $135,904, to be exact. That doesn't mean, of course, that we have those dollars or in January that the Brink's truck pulls up and gives us that money. That's betting on the revenue that we're projecting, and a lot of that $81 million is tied up in the wastewater project. So over the last five to six to seven years, we've had high budgets, but we've done the water plant, we've done the aquatic center, we have the wastewater plant. So some people want to know, you know, why has the budget gone up $10 million, $10 or $20 million in the last 10 years? Well, we've had some big projects, so a lot of that is grant, a lot of it is loan. So we have to take that into consideration as well. So we start with that strategic plan, our old standby document. I think I brought mine here somewhere as a vision to kind of guide where we're going overall, and there's a lot of details within. If you pull that out, when you look at the budget, you should see some ties and some connections to this roadmap, we call it, to the larger vision. You will not see in here an update to the strategic plan. That's intentional. I think we still have a long ways to go with this current plan, but it is in the back of our minds. Yet to be seen here what happens with sales tax in the general fund when it comes to food sales tax. So I think, you know, probably Proposed Budget 2025, we'll be talking about that process. When we have a little bit more information, we'll be able to scale that vision as necessary. So a lot to be talked about with that. Local economy is good. Sales tax, as you know, is strong. We have had a record number of building permits, for building permit valuations. The budget number is even lower than where we stand today. Today, it's over $73 million in building permit valuations, which is a really amazing, considering we're just coming out of the pandemic. But it's, to me, shows confidence that people have in Yankton and in our community and in the economy. We have the potential for about 150 multifamily housing units this year. We are lagging a little bit with single-family housing permits, mostly because of lot availability. And as many of you know, we're working with Thrive as they apply and work with South Dakota Housing for some potential funding so we can move forward. We anticipate with Garden Estates to open up some single-family lots so that our builders can actually do some single-family home construction. So we're in a better position, I think, than a lot of communities. We're not a one-horse town, so to speak. Our manufacturing is broad-based and diverse. We have a lot of different types of manufacturing going on. We have, of course, tourism, which is a big part of our economy and a very vibrant part of our economy. We also have agriculture, which is not necessarily all taking place. That industry is not all taking place within the community, but is certainly sort of the blood pressure, I always say, or heartbeat driving through our economy. We have a medical economy in Yankton, which is, you know, a lot of great service providers there that does bring business, a lot of commerce and workforce to Yankton. So to me, we're in a better position than a lot of communities are, and we're poised well for growing if we can manage to get some houses built as we work with our partnerships there and get more folks in town filling some of those jobs that we have available. So all positive things, but we do want to proceed with caution. One little thing that I do want to tidy up for some of you, and I don't know if anyone noticed this except maybe Charlie back there, but the cemetery has in the past been in the 600 series. It is now in the 200 series. What does that mean? It means it went from enterprise fund to a general fund account, and that's really how that fund behaves. So there's nothing different. I just didn't want someone to be paging through their budget, not see cemetery where they're used to seeing it or seeing the right numbers and thinking we're doing something different. But it's, doesn't, it doesn't act like one of those funds. It doesn't work in the same way, and so we're really putting it in its rightful place. And we've made changes in the past, as you know, with like snow and ice. We've made changes there to just make it make a little more sense for our organization. So that's just a little cleanup that I wanted to visit with you about. So let's talk a little bit about 2023 and this year's budget and some of the things that have gone on. The C Mar contract for our wastewater project, you'll see, I think, next meeting on the 28th, and you'll be talking about that and hopefully acting on that. Our FEMA floodway hazard mitigation project is nearing completion now, and that was a big capital project, multiple years, lots of grant money. Some new streets, you know, the Mead Area addition, we're having some new development going on, and there's a lot of local street construction as well that has occurred this year, for example, downtown, and we'll have another project here in 2024. In terms of culture and recreation, we've made some investments. Some of them are small investments, I would say, with a big cultural impact, such as music at the Meridian, and some are big investments with more of a recreational component. So I want to talk a little bit about West Side Park Pond, and you'll hear this twice because I want to give the update to the community as well in the regular meeting. And I want to talk about that in the grander picture of West Side Park. So hopefully have a little dialogue here. A few months ago, I think when we started our capital budget discussion, I mentioned to you, hey, well, we're going through the pond repair, and I think we were on Pond Repair 1 at the time, and things were tore up. How about doing some irrigation if we think we can fit that into the budget and doing some things of that nature to, you know, make sure that we have some nice grass when that's complete? And it seemed like that was the consensus, and we talked a little bit about that during our capital budget meeting. So we did put an additional allocation into West Side Park 2023 budget. Well, we're now at a stage where we've had an additional repair done on the pond, and as everyone knows, it drives by, it's still not holding water. So why that is, I guess I can't tell you completely. However, the last repair that was done, all of the soil was reworked, except for what is behind the rock that's around that pond. However, once that water went below that rock, it still continued to leak, so we know that the problem isn't, is somewhere at, you know, below that level, or there continues to be a problem below that level. So our engineering firms, our geotechnical engineering firm and civil engineering firm and contractor have recommended to us, you know, let's not do the same thing again, getting, doing the same thing again and getting the same result. There's a definition for that. They've said what their recommendation would be is an impermeable liner in that pond, which will require, you know, a lot of that, the rocks and plantings to come out, a liner to be put in, and then the landscaping and rock put back in. The synthetic liner is, has to be custom, of course, to the size of the pond. They're getting two quotes for that, and then they'll be putting together a design to bring forward to you all for, you know, discussion and action. I don't think that it's reasonable right now to start putting in irrigation when we know we're going to have more dirt work and things done there. To me, it just, that doesn't make good sense. We know there's going to be more work and a lot more work to be done there. The other thing that I want everyone to know is that while it's part of my nightly prayers that this could get resolved quickly, the reality of the calendar is that it's late August. By the time we have a design, if that design is of an amount that needs to be bid out, then we have to, you know, have a review of the bids, then we bring it to the commission. You know how these things work. I don't expect it to be done this construction season. I certainly wish it was, but I just don't know yet. So we don't have, perhaps, you know, perhaps it's a possibility, but I don't think so. But I wanted to offer that to you all as a commission because when that comes forward, there could be a lot of discussions there about what that looks like from a budgetary perspective. Before I pause to move forward and let you guys talk a little bit and ask questions there, in the grander picture of West Side Park, we still have some things that are yet not done that we wanted to complete. The pickleballers have been patiently waiting to hear what happens with the Land Water Conservation Fund. We do not know if we were successful with that grant or not. So depending upon what happens there, there'll be a discussion, I'll bring a discussion forward to you as to whether or not that project moves forward with grant funds or without grant funds. But of course, what we budgeted additional in 2023 is finite as well. So we're going to have a lot of West Side Park Pond and West Side Park discussions here going forward. But I do think that it's important with the investment that's already been made that we get something there that's reflective of the private gifts that we have and also reflective of what we asked for, which was, you know, a nice area and a pond that has water and maintains the water level. So with that, I thought I'd pause here in case you all have specific questions about that. In terms of the budget, and if I can't answer them, we have staff here too that can help out, but that's where that stands today. I must have done a good job explaining.
So in terms of the synthetic liner, we don't really have any kind of a ballpark yet as to what that's going to cost and how much of that is going to be additional expense?
I'm sorry, I don't. I don't. And, you know, there'll be some discussions, you know, regarding what, what the city's cost would be, because we already have invested in a design. And rest assured, our partners do want a successful project there as much as we do. I'm not, certainly not implying anything other than that, but we'll have to work that out. So even when I have that cost, and when we know what the quotes are, I'll let you all know, but I just don't know at this time. I'm hoping by the end of this week or next, we will have some information.
And that was going to be my question, what, if we have an idea with the liner cost, then also as we get further down the road, we've paid for the work once, so I'm hoping that the work that has to be done again. We may pay for the liner potentially, but I think the work obviously is someone.
I think Ross has a, can offer some insight on that.
So when we met with the contractors and the engineers this last week, we made it clear that, you know, the city will pay for one correct design and the construction of that correct design. And anything in there that is, that didn't work, that is superfluous, that is designed that didn't end up getting used, if we've paid for that, that would, it would be expected that would come off. Of course, you know, there's a long road to hoe before we figure all of that out. But we made it clear that was the city's position, that we can all expect we will see at the end of this.
So I'll give another update in the, in the regular meeting as well, maybe a little shorter, but so everyone understands where we're at.
Was all of the irrigation, is it all around the pond?
Well, we haven't, we've asked for an estimate for irrigation around the pond area, but we have not, I don't believe we've received that yet. Kind of putting that on hold now because of the additional equipment and things that they'll be bringing in.
Yeah, that makes, it makes sense to me. There's no, we're not going to be doing that. I just was making sure that everything was around the pond.
That immediate area.
In case there was something that was not near that area that could be done elsewhere in the park.
Well, we're doing some irrigation elsewhere in the park as well. I call it the, what, Charlie's Pizza Corner away from that project. So we're doing small, a small portion that's not near that area. And even when, once we have that project design, project cost, you know, you all may still want to invest in irrigation. You know, part of me feels like at this point, we want to make that project a centerpiece and a focal point and, and, you know, maybe you want to invest that. You know, also, I, we've had a lot of gifts for that project to come to fruition, and, you know, I've been in contact with Avera regularly because I feel like when you're given a gift, you know how used to it, that gift is important, and I want to make sure that we're not, you know, they understand that we're doing everything we can. So we'll talk, we'll have lots of conversation about the pond in this fall. I think I mentioned to you as well, the concession stand at Surtoma Park. We need some electrical work done there that was included in the 2023 budget. Just the, we need to have a facility there unless we're going to completely redo it. We need to invest some money in our facilities there to keep them up to date. Want to talk too, a little bit about public safety, just in the, in the nature of some things that you've seen. You've seen the bike patrol around. Monty likes to report how many miles he gets every day on the bike, so he's, they've been a success. I think you'll see them during riverboat days as well. So if you're down at the park, don't be surprised if you see cops on, on police, on bikes. They've been a good addition, and I think it, sometimes they've actually responded to calls in a more timely fashion, depending upon the call than, than the patrol car. So that was, I think, a good investment. We'll continue to see how that grows in our community. This year, Chief Linky and President Miller of the Yankton Volunteer Fire Department and many others in the community worked on a strategic plan for the volunteer fire department here in our community, which is a great idea. Couple changes that have been made. So you'll see in the fire department, there is a $60,000 allocation for the volunteer fire department pension. So the state statute allows the insurance premium check that we receive from the county to be utilized for a pension program for volunteers. So one of the things we want to make sure that we continue to do is recruit volunteers and make volunteerism in our fire department, in our fire service attractive. It's certainly worthy, and many people know that, but it's also a nice thank you to them to be able to leave service and have, you know, some type of pension plan. So the, part of the sort of organization and administrative discussion was talking about that. So this isn't new money. It's not money that's, you know, coming out of your general fund or this community's general fund. It's money that comes through the state and the county to the volunteer fire department, and it will be allocated equally among volunteer members to the pension fund moving forward. But it's in your budget because it goes, moves through us, so it'll be really handing the check over then to the Yankton Volunteer Fire Department, but it is written out to the city, so that's what that is in your budget. Also, we talked about a change in call pay earlier this year, and so depending upon what discussion you all have here in our budget meeting, we'll be increasing the call pay amount moving forward in 2024 as well as retroactively from 2023, because we've been talking about this with the fire department for some time, but need to have, you know, the mechanism of the budget to authorize that, that allocation. So want to talk through that with you. So if we don't hear differently from you in the next few weeks, we'll move forward first with the 2023 back pay. That has to be done by resolution, so it, you know, everyone can have input. And then also the new resolution for 2024 and going forward of the new call pay. So as your ordinance is today, it sets the amount of call pay by resolution. The last one we found on record was $8. That's not what the pay is today, but we couldn't even find the one setting the pay as it is today, so we would do that by resolution. But we would move forward with that unless we heard otherwise from you. So just want to give you a little bit of opportunity to talk about that if you want to.
I'm not seeing any mics going.
Okay, we'll be moving forward in that, in that fashion then, and of course, you can have more discussion.
Now.
Bridgette? I did have one question in regards to that. So we were looking kind of at fictitious numbers, saying you're estimating this is how much more it will be by raising it to the 40. But now that we know that we'd be backdating it to January 1 of 2023, do we have an idea of what that difference is?
Well, it depends upon the calls, and it depends upon the calls that, you know, going forward. So we can, I can pull out here, we do. I'm not sure I can pull that number out of my head or out of the budget, but I can certainly talk about that. When we budgeted for the following year, I think we budgeted worst-case scenario.
Right.
If every firefighter goes to every call, calls based on average, based on an average number of calls for the last few years, and I want to say, Chief, we were looking at 100 and.
70 calls?
170 calls, but.
70 calls.
70 calls, but I want to say it was 130,000.
130,000.
Total. And back pay, I think, Brittany, do you remember what we were talking about? I think up to Janu, up to June or July, it was 11,000 additional dollars. I'll get the commission that exact, those exact figures. It's not a secret, I just don't happen to know.
No, and the only reason why I asked is because I knew we were just kind of projecting on the heavy side, and I think the individuals knew that, you know, we were trying to be supportive in the direction that they were going, and if they knew it was going to be backpaid, I think we would have already seen some of the shift in numbers of those reporting to calls and things like that. So it kind of gives us a good perspective of what the difference is now.
Yeah, I'll make sure that I jot that down to, to get that information and so you can talk, and you'll have those, oh, I have it right here. Look at that. Back pay as of July 21 for 2023, 11,620. So it's pretty, I still got it. But there is a little bit of cost. But there is a little bit of cost as well because part of that discussion of administration was setting up all our volunteers on UKG and our payroll system so that all goes through payroll and taxes as, as it needs to. A lot of our volunteers are on our UKG because they're people like Mr. Bindi who's already a city, city employee, but some, some are not. So we'd be putting them in. So there's some admin additional, but you know, it's nominal for, for keeping all that stuff straight. But I will get the 2024 projected number to you all. As I said, we do not have our wages negotiated for either collective bargaining unit and you do have employees. We have a tentative agreement with the, with the AFSMI, but not with FOP. You do have employees who are not represented. So we will be bringing forward salary resolutions to you. They do have to fit within what's budgeted or you'll, you'll have to make arrangements in your budget accordingly. We also, in terms of HR, have made an investment in doing some additional mental health and wellness training. And we are proposing that in the upcoming budget as well. We just know that it's not just police and fire that encounter high stress situations anymore. It's, you know, everybody has personal high stress situations, but certainly dispatchers and even if you can believe it, some people on the front line and our other departments don't always, aren't always treated as well as we'd like them to be by the public. So we want to have that ability and think that's important. I, I want to talk a little bit about our projections for sales tax. We're projecting in 2024 that our sales tax will be 4% growth. And in 2024, very conservatively projected 2% growth. I hope that I am wrong about that and our growth is much higher than 2%, but I just don't know. So I'm, I want to be conservative there. I think, as I said, Yankton, the economy is doing well, but we also know that there's threats to that economy and, and some things that are, are coming forward that might, we might need to think twice about. Just for everyone's edification, 1% of our wages is $86,000 approximately, a little over $86,000. 1% of our sales tax right now is 71,000, a little over 71,000. So, you know, when you talk about, well, if, if, if sales tax goes up 4%, that's not, and can we, can we increase wages 4%? It's not the same. Doesn't mean you can't, but it's not, 1% isn't 1% all the way across. And so, you know, what we always want to do is look at growing the pie. We've heard that before so that we're able to do all the things and that we want to do in the budget. And many of our wages, as you know, are, are paid out of the general fund. And so I just talked to you about that so you have some numbers to, to think about. So when I talked about the food sales tax possibly coming to a close for the state of South Dakota, there is a discussion about an initiated measure that would put a halt on food sales tax or consumables, maybe not food, but consumables, whatever the definition that is. I've yet to hear whether or not that will include municipalities. If it includes municipalities and if it were to pass, we could be in trouble. Most recent I've heard is that there are a lot of other associations and a lot of other factions in the state that don't think that's a good idea, mostly because, you know, we don't have an income tax and they don't want it to pave the way for income tax. That's above my pay grade. What we've estimated is that we think in Yankton, that tax generates about a million dollars a year. So, you know, in a couple of years, we, we could be talking about where we're cutting a million dollars. I, I'm not going to take a stance on, on that. It'll be, if it impacts our local sales tax for food, it'll be up to the public to decide that. But I just want to talk to you about that so we're realistic there, which is, you know, why, why hesitate to move forward too quickly with strategic planning yet until we know what's on the horizon? But we can't just stop the train because we don't know who's going to be on the track. We have to keep, you know, moving forward and keep doing things. So I want to talk about a few things that are budgeted and that we're moving forward with that I think are, are good projects and they're based off of our discussions with you earlier this spring. Meridian Bridge Centennial, that group has been meeting and is making plans this year and into next year for celebrating the 100th anniversary of the Meridian Bridge and all that means to Yankton's history, economy, tourism and recreation. I'm excited about that. I think that's something we can look to next year as being a point of pride and get the community behind. Eighth Street, Burley to Ferday, that'll be a big improvement project there is planned right now. 21st Street Summit to West City Limits Road. Also, Bridgette, you're going to have to go in the back door of the bank. Cedar, Second to Fourth being planned there. So continuing to work on the Meridian District downtown, keeping that looking great and street reconstruction there. Now, the uplighting and stone benches, all those types of things are not part of that project. We will plan some planters, et cetera, to sort of accessorize in the same theme of the downtown that we've put forward on Walnut and, and down to the mouth of the bridge. We don't have the capacity as it's, as the budget stands today, unless you all change something, to do the same kind of improvement that we've done on Walnut, nor do we have the staff to take care of that. But of course, that's in your hands. If you would decide to do something different, allocate money somewhere else or allocate money there and not somewhere else. The comprehensive plan is moving forward. So Dave Mingo, Planning Commission, you and the community will all be working on the comprehensive plan. In the budget this year is a, this year 2024 is a library feasibility study. So lots of talk about the library lately, but this is not the same kind of talk. This is the kind of talk about what's our vision there. When we have snake man or when we have public discussion, we don't have enough room in our library. When we have the hoop dancing lady and the foam cannon and all the great things that Dana and her staff have brought forward, we're out of space. We have good technology, but not enough. You know, we have a great assortment of media, but the library's really turned into way beyond books and that's part of their mission. But I think they should add, you know, way or a lot more because it's really become a place of community, I think collaboration and connectivity in a way that it didn't used to be. So the Library Foundation has, has requested to you, let's find out what the community wants. Let's find out what the interest of the community is. Let's figure out what the cost of that would be or where that would be and what that would look like and is there interest and passion for that? And so that's what that study would be about. And I don't know, I hope you can tell by the way I talk about it, how I feel about it. But, you know, it's important for the community to, to weigh in here because, and that would be part of that feasibility study. So the Library Foundation is, you know, suggesting that they meet you in paying for that feasibility study. I'm going to take a drink of water since my throat's starting to croak and see if you have questions so far on where, where we're at with the budget or, or want to make comments or want to ask a department head a tough question.
What was the, I see the total you said is 81.1 million. What was the total last year? Is this the biggest one we've had?
I don't know. It's close. If it's not the biggest, it's within a couple million. Last year might have, Duane's going to look that up. I, I feel like it was 79 last year.
And how's it looking year to date in terms of actual costs? I know that I've seen, I've seen some departments where it looks to me like the total spend is going to be a fair amount less than the total budgeted. So I'm just kind of wondering.
Yeah, so I'm glad you asked that because part of the budget, and, and you'll see that if you, if you or the community looks through that, some of the pie charts and pie graphs, a lot of our budget is, a large percent of it is carryover from the previous year. So part of that, a lot of that 81 million is, is what we don't spend. And so it'd be interesting to look at the percentages of that over the course of the year, especially now when we have a couple of projects that are coming in over. But we haven't ever spent what, everything that we budget and that's a good thing. Otherwise we'd be in trouble the previous year.
So last year, the adopted budget was 81,164,000.
So I'm less, we're less. Saving, saving the taxpayer money. So I guess the answer to, does this wastewater plant look, make my budget look big is yes. Does. Yeah, but when, I think, you know, rewind 10 years ago, we were in the upper 50s, low 60s, but we weren't doing anything. I mean, let me rewind that too. We were, we were not doing the big projects that we're seeing now, water treatment plant, wastewater plant. We were doing things. You see in your budget, we have some city hall upgrades. Our building is old, but it's an oldie but a goodie. So we have some upgrades there we'd like to do. We also have capital that is planned with the school and the Summit Activity Center. As you all know, that's a shared facility and while it doesn't feel old, it is getting old to the point where some of those capital things need to be replaced. And when you're looking at roofs, roof replacement and things of that nature, you get into the big dollars pretty quickly. I think our most important capital is our human capital and those are the people that are doing all the things and implementing all the plans that you all have. So our budget does call for steps in the pay plan. So we have a 20-step pay plan for employees. So it allows for that and also a cost of living adjustment, which we're still working through negotiating. All those things have to be approved through the commission as well. So once we have all our tentative agreement, we'll bring forward to you to discuss. And you also have decisions to make about your nonrepresented employees. The health insurance rate, we budgeted 12%. We don't know what that increase will be for sure. However, we've gotten an indication from our broker that it looks like we're doing pretty well right now with claims. But when we were told that, it was halfway through the year. So, you know, you don't know, one big claim from one person can really change the trajectory for a small group. But so far, so good on that. So we'll hope that we come back. There wasn't an intention to change providers, but all that depends upon cost. If something comes back, you know, really strong, we'll have to take a look at that with the Health Insurance Committee. They'll make a recommendation to me and then that'll be presented to you. Of course, there's a lot of other capital purchases planned. We talked about those. I have those listed in the, in the budget letter to talk, not all of them, but I pulled out some that I thought would be interesting and kind of representative of different types of work that we do. I want to talk about our utility rates because I think that's important and I think that's an interest for everybody. So water rate, I'm not proposing any increase in the water rate. We have a balance in the water fund. We think we'll be okay there with the revenue we project. So I don't think we should raise rates just to raise them. I do think when we need to raise them, we should keep up with the cost of operations and capital and not get too far behind. But I, I, I'm not proposing any increase in water. And I would presume if you spoke with people, they would say their water is, is already high enough. So wastewater, there is that surcharge planned that was already passed by the commission for the improvements at the wastewater project. That is an additional $6.31 on a surcharge. So you'll see, folks will see that if, on to their rates in, in the fall, but no increase in the rate. So the only increase in wastewater is a surcharge. So want to make that clear. The rate isn't changing, but there is an additional $6.31. Also, solid waste rate moving up $2.39. It's a 10% increase. So when you say 10%, that seems like a large increase in a rate. It's $2.39. Primarily capital there, big capital expenses in solid waste, that equipment. And the building is used heavy and it's used hard and, you know, daily, on a daily basis. And so we need to keep up with that. Part of that too is, is operational, but largely capital. So $2.39 there. So I want people to realize that because I think that's something that they, people are interested in when they hear about, what does that mean for me as a citizen when we talk about the budget? So that's the utility plan right now. So I'm going to pause here and see what you want to talk about. I buzzed through the overview really quickly, but if there is a certain budget you want to delve into, or there is a certain project you want to talk about, or you want to say we absolutely shouldn't do this project and we should do a different one, we can talk about that here.
I was curious about sales tax projections. Now, I believe you've been here about 10 years.
Correct.
I'd be interested to see sometime, kind of like a list of those 10 years, what we projected and what the actual growth was. Just curious to see how we're doing. I know you want to be conservative and not anticipate more than we're going to get, but I'd just be curious to see the numbers, projection versus actual.
Yeah, I think, I think we can probably put something together for you. I think I've been wrong every year.
Well, probably low, I'm sure.
Yes. And, you know, I think people have said, you know, well, maybe I'm too conservative. I am conservative when it comes to that. I'm always nervous about trying to treat, you know, trying to look at the community dollars as my own. Do the things we need to do, do them as best we can and not do them cheaply. Do some fun things, but don't, don't do so many things that we're scrambling. And then of course, you know, make sure we're, we're doing the things that we're obligated by contract to do. So, but yeah, I'd be interested in percentage versus the estimate.
Percentage versus actual.
Yeah.
However you look at it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions or, you know, you will have your public hearing. So I'm sure after this presentation, you'll hear from the community on things they want I can talk about, if you want to, the outside agencies and capital in more depth. However, we did talk about those and we did not make a lot of changes.
That's actually where I was scrolling to. So yeah, if you just kind of want to, one more time over that, that would be good.
So outside agencies, not a lot of changes there. I got to pull open the page of the budget that it's on because I don't know out of the, off the top of my head.
75.
So we have some outside agencies which are out of the general fund and not out of the triple B. We talked about the triple B back in May or June, I can't remember. But we also pay for some of those out of the general fund. So Lewis and Clark Mental Health is an allocation of $20,000. We have a contract with is an allocation of $20,000. We have a contract with Heartland Humane Society, and I believe that's budgeted in police. At one time, it was in outside agencies, but I believe that's now in the police budget, because that's really the entity they work through. The Small Business Development Center has an allocation. And then, Yankton Transit, the Yankton Transit allocation grew by about 15,000 a few years ago. Of course, that continues to be more expensive to operate and a bigger need in Yankton as we look to help with the workforce and getting folks to employment, getting kids to their daycare, or to the educational facilities. That is probably in the general fund, because if it wasn't provided through transit, it might be a service that was asked of a community to provide. So, really, transit is one, we have, we meaning me and last past commissions have felt that is really a community service that we're bolstering by contributing to it. The collective impact funding, United Way, those of you who've been on the commission for a while know that United Way has a better job, does a better job than we ever could of tracking and following the impact of funds that are given to certain entities. So, we used to give 5,000, or 10,000, or 15,000 to various entities in the community. And we gave that, and that's all we, we never had any issue that wasn't being allocated or spent well, but we didn't follow through to track, you know, where was that spent, what was the impact of that expenditure. United Way has a process for weighing that. Two of you, I believe, are on that board. And so, any of the entities that fall within United Way's mission are included in that collective impact. So, we give one lump sum to United Way, and then those entities make an application to United Way as a whole, and they're allocated accordingly. So, our money goes into a pool with other resources in the community that are raised or contributed through other entities or grants for those types of services. So, things like, for example, the contact center would be one that applies. So, Boys and Girls Club, I believe, is one of those entities. So, there's a lot of those, and it really streamlined and provided a little more follow-up on the allocations of public dollars. And at the time that agreement was made, that commission felt that was appropriate, because they are public dollars. Even, we know they're going to good causes, but there's lots of good causes, and I think that provides a little more information to the community about where the dollars go.
Can I take you back one earlier, which was the transit? When we upped that amount, was that also because it's being matched as well? Are those funds being matched?
I can't remember if we were matching a grant at the time. I'd have to go back through and look. I believe when I came on, it was $30,000 for allocation for a long time, and I'm not sure if we matched through rocks, or how that worked. I'll have to go back and look.
That's fine.
I would just say, I was on the commission when we made that change and entered that partnership with United Way. And I remember what it was like in the old days with Charlie, sitting, and you have all of these organizations that are doing such great work and are so worthy, and you're carving, you know, $500 here and trying to make it make sense. United Way has done a tremendous job. I have no doubt that the dollars we were giving prior to working with United Way, I have no doubt those dollars made impact. But in working with Lauren and her crew, we have ways to measure that impact, and she can immediately sense and help advise and move dollars in a way that they need to be moved sensibly, logically, and using what she sees with her data. So, that's been a fantastic partnership.
That applies to all outside agencies except Thrive, is that right? What the United Way decides?
No. So, the general, those listed in the general fund, transit and Lewis &amp; Clark Behavior Fund or General Fund. Then, we have the ones that we talked about in May, which are on page, hang on, I got to get the...
106.
Yes. I'm impressed if you guys know that, and just...
Yeah, it's just number five.
Okay. So, the ones on page 106 are out of the BBB, and those are included. Thrive is included in that. Entities like MSAC, Missouri Sedimentation Action Coalition, Lewis &amp; Clark Theater, Yankton Baseball, those, while good things in our community, do not fall under the mission of what United Way is providing for the community. And so, when we had that agreement constructed, which I can certainly share, again, with the commission, it was only those which fell under that mission. And so, there are some of these that are still in the Triple B. I think the discussion really revolved around parsing out what was more promotional versus what was more community care, if that's the right type of language. So, Riverboat Days, for example, you know, has been something that the community has, commission and community, through the community, has provided a contribution, doesn't really fall under the mission of United Way. And so, they're not an agency that's under that. And maybe it's more of a cultural slash promotional under the Triple B.
United Way has a pillar system. I'm sorry, I'm not on the United Way board, but the United Way has a pillar system to determine under which pillar their funding falls. Yeah.
Yes. I'm not on that board either. I think it's, is it...
It's my fault.
Okay. So, there is a method to that madness. It was a long time coming there. But I think, too, one of the things that Lauren wanted to do is not duplicate, try not to duplicate services in the community, and try to have more of a one-stop for entities that are looking for support. And if one entity, for example, for one year, can go after a large grant with a bigger allocation to leverage larger dollars, that might make a difference in how they weigh those out.
It's just that with United Way's involvement, it does make it awkward or difficult, doesn't it, for a commission to say, we're going to take 60,000 away from Thrive and put 20 more in Yankton Area Arts, 20 more in Boys and Girls Club, what have you. It makes it a little more difficult to do a shift like that, if we were to decide that was what we wanted to do.
To move it out of the Triple B and into the general fund, you mean?
Well, I'm just talking about priorities. And let's say you wanted to say, we're going to cut this one and move it over here. Is that something we can do as a commission without the United Way's participation, or?
Yes, you can. I guess I wouldn't recommend doing that without a conversation with United Way. United Way submitted a application for the collective impact fund, and they asked for an allocation. I don't recall what they asked for. So, the commission can change that, as did Thrive. They're just, Thrive doesn't really fit under the general, I suppose you could pay for it out of the general fund. We wouldn't recommend it. It's where it fits. I wouldn't recommend that. But Thrive did the same thing. They're allocated out of the Triple B. But yes, the commission can change or make a recommendation to change any of the outside agencies. If you're transferring funds, we would guide you, because you would want to follow your ordinance on the Triple B, so you're not going outside what that ordinance that regulates the Triple B or the state statute is. But yes. I think it has also cooled down here a little bit. So, whatever button Steve was pressing, The other thing that you'll have to talk about is if you want to meet again tomorrow night, we have tomorrow night allocated as well, if you want to visit more. I'm not feeling like, based on the conversations, you'll need that. But you have, definitely have that possibility. And then, like I said, there's the whole public process to go through. Typically, the questions start coming, more questions start coming to me after this presentation.
With the MEED TID, are we looking at completing that in this next budget cycle? The cities' portion of infrastructure, or is that going to continue on to the next budget?
I think we'll be finished by 2023 with the construction. Won't be finished with the, you know, payment will come over a long period of time with the TID. So, Gale Drive, probably not in 2023, unless we really get surprised on our winter. So, that'll move into, you know, the upcoming years. But yeah, I expect that there'll be construction unless we get a real early winter, building construction and that development before the snow flies. At least footings and foundational.
Amy, in Triple B, can you walk us through, I see special events, event coordinator activities, and then like special projects?
Sure.
Just kind of clarifying and breaking those down, because I'm looking at like the activities line. And while I see there's no increase, 95,000 is budgeted, but only 9,197 is 2023 year-to-date. So, I'm wondering, is that just the timing of when bills come through, or is that an overture of what we actually expect to spend? And then, same with special projects, clarify again for me what's there. You'll see 2023 estimated was 65, but proposed 24 is 5.
Right. So, the large number that you see there for event coordinator activities includes the Meridian Bridge celebration.
Okay.
So, they haven't, I don't think, made a lot of decisions yet on expenditures. So, there's that. And so, some of that may carry over. I mean, I initially split it between two years, thinking, you know, some of the commitments are going to have to be made this year. There may be, we may carry forward into 2024, or depending upon what they decide, maybe a lot of expenditures are made yet in 2023. But that's, that's that line item. Also, you know, special projects are things that, you know, come up during the year that we might not have planned or known even about. Somebody might come with an idea or a concept. We also have special events line item that you talked about there. You know, that's the music at the Meridian, those types of things, kids at the park. And those events will probably make some changes. We're getting better, I think, at the music at the Meridian. Our weather really didn't serve us very well this year. It's just how it worked out for kids in the park. I think you'll see us tailor the schedule of music in Meridian probably this last week of Riverboat Days. We probably won't do that Thursday before Riverboat Days. There's a lot going on in the park, lots of staff commitment. And, you know, Riverboat Days is, I think, a lot of entertainment opportunities, so we'll probably cut that schedule a little bit. There is some increase in costs as well. And so, you know, want to make sure we continue to secure good entertainment that people enjoy. Try to keep improving the event.
So, the special projects for this year include the Sheraton Shade Structures for 50,000?
Oh, yeah, that's right.
And the historic buildings for 10,000.
Yeah. So, if something comes up, brought to you like that, which we didn't anticipate...
Amy, can you repeat that, in case anybody's listening?
The special projects this year, 2023, includes the shade structures that was brought to you as a project unbudgeted. And we talked about that. And then, also, the baseball that came up, the turfing project.
But it looks like, is baseball under the Yankton Baseball, though? Because that line item is 94,000 for 2022. Or is that a difference?
I think on the extra...
You want to turn your mic on?
It'll be in the special events. We have a supplement that you already had a discussion allocated.
Yes, we have. I was just trying to equate where that is in the budget.
I'll have to go back and look, and maybe we didn't carry that number forward, Al and Dwayne, to 2023, because it's in 2022. The Yankton Baseball?
In 2022, I see 94,336, which on top of what we usually get them in their ask, would about equate, right? But that's in the 2022. But their ask was...
And maybe that was 2022 requested.
Yes.
And spent.
So, 2022 included $3,736 for turf repair, $87,000 for the stadium, and then $3,600 for their Yankton baseball annual class.
Yeah, that makes sense, because in the shade structures, we didn't purchase till spring, till after the new year in 2023, in the other line item.
Yeah, and the shade structures were at Sheraton, so thus...
Yes. Yes.
Okay. I wanted to be sure, when you'd said things like baseball, because that's not a normal request for them, didn't go under special projects.
Correct. And I forgot that it was 20, I've been talking about 2024, so I forgot that it's 2023. So, yeah, that expenditure was made in 2022. And the shade structures, we talked about in 2022, but they didn't get done until 2023. So, that's why that's budgeted that way.
Amy, I do see we have about 25 minutes, and to give people kind of a break, too, beforehand. Anything else to point out in front of the commission tonight, or call attention to?
No, other than, you know, there are still a lot of unknowns. As we move forward, we'll be bringing new resolutions, for example, for wages and our health insurance. So, we'll adjust the sales accordingly that way. As I get feedback from the community and from you, I'll share that as we get towards the public hearing. The plan right now, I believe, is to set that public hearing at our next meeting. And so, then, the public hearing on the budget would be either the 11th or the 22nd, I believe, is the September meeting.
We'll introduce the next meeting, which is...
Al, can you speak into your mic, please?
Excuse me. We'll introduce it at the August 28th meeting and set the hearing, the public hearing and the second reading for the first meeting in September, which...
That is September 11.
11, yep.
Yeah.
Amy, if you'd like, I do have an answer for Commissioner Hunoff's question on budget projections versus actual, if you'd like me to share them.
Yeah. That's some quick math there.
So, this is just based on our budget letter for each year's proposed budget, and then the actual sales tax reports. So, for 2015, we budgeted 2% increase, and the actual ended up being 5.67%. In 2016, we budgeted a 2% increase, and the actual ended up being 1.75%. 2017, we budgeted 2%, the actual ended up being 2.54%. 2018, we budgeted 0, and we ended up with 4.27%. 2019, we budgeted 1.5, and it ended up with 4.04%. 2020, we budgeted 0, and ended up with 1.52%. 2021, we budgeted 0, and ended up with 10.6%. up with 1.52%. 2021, we budgeted 0 and ended up with 10.6%. 2022, we budgeted 3% and ended up with 8.7%. And to do an honest calculation, I'd go back and also factor in inflation and take that out so that you have a better comparison. So you're doing a apples to apples on actual what growth was versus what was inflationary increase. So, but that's the rough numbers that I have handy from 2015 to 22. Thank you.
Thanks, Dwayne.
Yeah. Thanks, Dwayne. Commissioners, any other questions, clarifications you need on the budget as we go and keep continuing to move forward here?
Commissioner Moser, I do have a comment. So I'm actually online right now, trying to pull up the e-Packet for this work session. And when you go to the e-Packet, if anybody out there is, is trying to do that, it, it just brings up the agenda. So we have to go back and fix the e-Packet for this work session. It's just the, in the e-Packet section, it's the agenda and the agenda is obviously the agenda. So it's the same, same page on both.
Okay.
We'll have to fix that.
We can get that fixed. And if anyone wants to, what we will put on the e-Packet is on the, is on the website. So people can look at it right now if they want to. But I understand what you're saying. Just be under the capital, or be under the proposed 2024 budget. And if you open up the city's webpage and you're in the search engine, you put 2024 budget, it should pop up for you. So, but the path, we can.
Yes. And it is there because that's actually what I looked at tonight is looking at it online under the city website. So that is working effectively. Just an FYI. But yeah, it doesn't hurt to have it a couple places to be transparent and easy for folks to find. Commissioner Hunoff, did you have a question?
I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I just looked for the red ring. So I just want to make sure. Oh, Al, I was going to get you too. We do have a little bit of time. And so if there's anybody in the public that has a question, I would invite you to come to the podium and, and ask a question of the budget if there is one. Anybody else think Charlie's slipping? There are no questions from Charlie girls. We'll check his well-being after this. Okay. Nobody else? Again, one more time for the commission. Otherwise, I forgot I took notes on this side of it. So since there are no other questions tonight, is there anybody in the commission that wishes to discuss the budget either tonight yet, under other business, or to go ahead and schedule anything tomorrow? Does anybody feel that is needed? I got nods, no on this side. Anybody on this side? No? Okay. So number four, to determine if a second night is needed for budget workshop. The answer to that is no. City Manager Leon, it is not needed either tonight or tomorrow night. Number five, there is no other business in front of the commission as far as the work session goes. So with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn the work session.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, and anybody abstaining. All right. We will take a short recess. It appears just about 15 minutes. We'll get started promptly here at 7:00 PM tonight with the regular city commission meeting.